Okay. All right, so good evening and welcome to our environmental justice impact statement and public hearing regarding two pending air permit applications for Mercer Group International located in Trenton, New Jersey. We are here for about 90 minutes or so. We've had a few people register virtually and we have two attendees and two representatives from the facility here in the room with us. Please use the hand raise feature. We have two people monitoring the presentation that will be able to interrupt me if there's a question. There will be ample time for questions at the end. We've got about 20 slides or so here. A couple at the beginning are purely informational, so we'll work our way through the presentation. At the end, we'll go to the folks in the room with any questions and then folks in the meeting, in the, in the meeting room for virtual comments. The hearing is being recorded. We are having a transcript prepared. There will be a Spanish language translation of the materials that'll be shared and uploaded to NJDEP's EJ page along with the presentation and the environmental justice impact statement. This will, we, I believe we have closed captions available if needed and that you can access by going to more language and speech and show live captions. Should we get any comments or questions at the end of the presentation? We will document those questions if we're not able to answer them directly this evening. We will be developing a response document outlining the facility's response, any comments and any concerns raised during the participation process. All of that will be published to the NJDEP EJ page shortly after the window for public participation closes. All attendees are invited to share their comments and questions. Again, we ask that that's done at the conclusion of the presentation. And then the period for the public comment began on October 1st. That was a 60-day public comment prior to today's public meeting. Then the comment period will continue for an additional 30 days, ending on December 31st. Any comments received tonight will be captured on the transcript. Any comments that are received via email or mail or any other means will be captured in the comment and response document. As available, we do have an email address that if you were able to receive the link tonight, that is mercergroup ejis@allforinc.com. If you do have a comment, we'd appreciate it if you shared your name, where you're from and your organization. We're requesting that folks keep comments to three minutes or less to allow for all participants to be heard. And like I just said, December 31st, the official public comment period ends and we do have the email address published here if needed for further comments. So the outline for this evening is essentially just introducing the facility and their operations, discussing the proposed projects and permit applications, reviewing the submitted environmental justice impact statement, discussing the project impacts on the environmental and public health stressors as defined in the New Jersey regulations, and then taking questions at the end. So Mercer Group is located at 1519 Calhoun Street in Trenton, essentially on the border of Ewing Township and Trenton. They operate a solid waste material recovery facility and transfer station. You may hear me refer to that as an MRF or TS. The facility's been serving the community since 1997. We're family-owned and operated and we operate state-of-the-art material recovery equipment, processing tons of waste materials every day in order to keep waste out of landfills. Our facility consists of an enclosed 42,000-square-foot building that is authorized to accept and process up to 1,500 tons of waste per day. Waste collection vehicles enter the facility from the access driveway on Kirkbride Avenue and then proceed directly into the facility to a waste station. Following a weigh-in, collection vehicles continue along the driveway to enter the building through one of four 30-foot-tall overhead doors located along the northeast building wall. The vehicle load is then discharged within the tipping floor. So just a brief graphic here. Waste collection vehicles enter the facility, go through a waste station, add their materials to the tipping floor where that waste is sorted, organized, processed, and then sent to material disposal and recovery depending on the size of the waste and the materials that we are gathering. The waste collection retrieves waste from surrounding communities. They are inbound waste stream is manipulated with rather large equipment, front-end loaders to sort the waste through a hopper before being manually sorted along a conveyor belt system. The last stage is where inbound waste is sorted before being sent to a landfill or being recycled or reclaimed. Any air emissions from the process are continuously controlled during material loading and unloading by two existing baghouses, each of which is followed by two carbon absorber process odor controls. This helps to eliminate dust materials and any odor from waste reclamation. Mercer owns and operates equipment on-site that contributes to the processing of the waste at the transfer station and recovery floor. In accordance with the facility's solid waste permit, the tipping floor supervisor will direct waste collection vehicles to discharge designated loads on the tipping floor and then the non-road vehicles such as front-end loaders are used to gather the waste and get it to where it needs to be so that it can be processed. Excavators are used to lift the waste into a hopper and from there, waste materials drop onto a vibratory screen where the waste is shaken and guided to a conveyor belt. A track shredder is used to facilitate the breakdown of wood waste prior to processing. We have a couple of images here from the inside of the facility, which is also found on their website. We operate multiple front-end loaders, excavators, forklifts, hoppers, shredders, and a screening and conveyor system. We have two pending projects right now with NJDEP, both air permit applications. The first project was submitted in late 2024 to install a Primax Model 6600 Waste Reducer, which is essentially a shredding facility, a shredding system at the facility to create an additional point of waste processing. This new additional shredder will allow for faster queuing times for inbound waste streams such as the trucks that come and process and deliver the waste, improving overall operational and facility efficiency. With this application, we are not proposing to increase any permitted waste throughput or to change the type of waste being processed at the station. The waste processing operations are contained entirely within the building and emissions are controlled by the existing air pollution control system inside the building, that is the baghouses and the carbon absorbers. At the end of each operating day, all waste has been removed from the recovery floor. Okay, I just want to go back one second. This will accompany the existing waste shredder again just to add some additional capacity of treatment to move things further along, allowing for faster truck movement, faster sorting, and faster reclamation activities. The second project is installing two new clean burn used oil burners. One is rated at .5 million BTU per hour and one is rated at .25 million BTU per hour. We have two existing used oil burners from, that are currently permitted on an NJDEP general permit. Those two existing and the two new will be added to a single permit that was submitted earlier in 2025. The heaters are used to provide comfort heat to employees that work within maintenance garages that are adjacent to the recovery floor and the tipping floor. The burners will burn on-spec used oil and may burn diesel fuel only as an alternative backup should there not be enough used oil available, but additional heat and comfort is required for employees working at the facility. Earlier this year, Mercer submitted their environmental justice impact statement addressing both of these two minor source permit applications. The applicability for the environmental justice impact statement and the hearing and public participation process is for two particular reasons. Number one, we are a facility that is a defined category in the New Jersey Environmental Justice Regulations. And number two, the installation of new equipment qualifies as an expansion. The facility located in Trenton is defined in an overburdened community and is also subject to solid waste management plans and solid waste permits. Facilities that are subject to these EJ rules must complete a screening exercise, submit the environmental justice impact statement for NJDEP and public review, and fulfill meaningful public participation. In accordance with NJAC 71C, the rules apply when an applicant submits a permit application for a new or expanded facility. While the facility has been in existence since the 1990s, the addition of new equipment qualifies as an expansion. The EJIS document is a systematic interdisciplinary and integrated assessment of environmental and public health conditions in an overburdened community. The EJIS identifies and analyzes existing environmental public health stressors, adverse environmental public health stressors, any absence or presence of adverse cumulative stressors, potential environmental and public health impacts associated with the facility, whether or not a particular facility can avoid causing a disproportionate impact, the measures the facility proposes to implement or continue to use to avoid or any, or address any disproportionate impact, and where applicable, how the new facility serves a compelling public interest to the overburdened community. These rules were implemented in 2023 and NJDEP has provided guidance as the regulated community developed the permitting process, the EJIS, the impact statement process, and best practices to address public comment. NJDEP evaluates certain facilities that are applying for permits to construct or operate to determine, to determine the potential for disproportionate impacts to environmental or public health stressors in an overburdened community. We included a few definitions here in the document. Essentially, our expansion means a modification or expansion of existing operations or footprint. While we aren't expanding the footprint, the addition of two new heat of waste oil burners to serve heaters and the addition of the, of the shredder, again, while not increasing our capacity or any other permitted capacity, will qualify as an expansion. Our facility does meet the definition of a transfer station or other solid waste facility or recycling facility intending to receive at least 100 tons of recyclable material per day. We do not operate any scrap metal facility. There is no landfill on-site. We are not a resource recovery facility. We are clearly and solely classified under one category. An overburdened community indicates at least 35% households qualify as low income. 40% of residents identify as minority or members of a state-recognized tribal community or at least 40% of the households have limited English proficiency. Mercer meets the project because we're one of the eight facility types. Our permit applications were submitted to NJDEP meeting expansion and we are located in an overburdened community. The census block is identified here where 39.72% of households qualify as low income and 100% of the residents qualify as minority or members of a tribal community. We did prepare and submit the environmental justice impact statement to NJDEP in September 2025 and it is posted on the website and available for review. Mercer utilized NJDEP's environmental justice mapping assessment and protection tool known as EJ MAP to identify the OBC stressor summary report which indicates the adverse environmental public health stressors of the facility's block group. 26 potential stressors fall under eight categories. According to the EJ MAP report, Mercer's block group does trigger 21 of the 26 potential stressors. It's important to note that the Mercer facility did not create the existing stressors and complies with all permit requirements to mitigate any impacts to those stressors. One of the stressors, we'll work our way through these eight categories here, are ground-level ozone, fine particulate matter, cancer risk from diesel particulate matter from air toxics from excluding diesel, and then non-cancer risk from air toxics. Mercer proposes to limit annual operating time for used oil combustion. The oil burners will be operated outside of the ozone season, which is May through September, so they'll only be used in a seasonal capacity and each limited to less than 2,000 hours of operation per year. Trenton has reported concentrations of PM 2.5 below the National Ambient Air Quality Standard and the project is not expected to significantly contribute to levels of PM 2.5. The oil burners will burn diesel fuel only as an alternative operating scenario. Diesel-fueled waste haul trucks and non-road vehicles utilize ultra-low sulfur diesel. We minimize idling times when accessing the waste station and the transfer floor. The shredder will limit annual operating time. The annual operating time for used oil combustion will also prevent any diesel particulate matter, diesel, the cancer risk from diesel PM and the non-cancer risk from any additional air toxics. Their, their limited operation introduces minimal increases in any hazardous air pollutant emissions. As part of the permit application, a risk screening worksheet was prepared where potential emissions were quantified and identified for listing in the department's for screening worksheet. All risk was determined negligible by that first step impact worksheet. Potential emissions from both the shredder project and the new oil burners are shown at the bottom of Slide 15, indicating that any potential increases which are on a maximum operation capacity are less than one ton per year. Mobile sources of air pollution are traffic from cars and light duty to, light to medium duty trucks. This is minimized because this will not require Mercer to hire any additional staff or implement any new traffic patterns or traffic vehicles entering and exiting the property. The overall capacity of the site will stay the same. Any heavy-duty waste collection trucks are used to transport solid waste from residential areas to the facility. Proposed operations and projects will not increase the volume of waste accepted or processed and not increase the number of trucks accessing the facility. The Mercer facility is also not located in an OBC that contains local or regional railways. The facility does not currently engage with any rail system to accept or transport waste. The proposed projects will not change the status of this. Contaminated sites include known contaminated sites, soil contamination, and groundwater classification. NJDEP has developed a list of known contaminated, contaminated sites. The Mercer facility is not located on a known contaminated site and the proposed projects will not create any site contamination. The facility is not located in a deed notice area for any soil or ground contamination and has no impact, the planned operations have no impact on that status. For groundwater classification, the facility is not loaded, located in a groundwater classification exception area or a currently known extent area. The proposed projects will not impact the status of the surrounding ground and well water. Transfer stations or other solid waste facilities and recycling and scrap metal facilities, as I mentioned earlier, we are not operating a scrap metal facility. We are permitted to operate a solid waste facility. We do comply with our solid waste capacity permits. The proposed projects will not result in any increase in the amount of weight, waste processed. Solid waste facility permits will not need to be modified and the projects do not contribute to the number or magnitude of facility operations within the surrounding community. And Mercer, like I said before, does not engage in the processing of scrap metal as part of the facility of operations. And we do not contribute to the scrap metal facilities in operation in nearby communities. Regarding point sources of water pollution, Mercer currently has an NJ, NJ pollutant discharge elimination system, an NAGIPTI's permit, which allows stormwater runoff from the facility to flow through outfalls that discharge to the west branch of, branch of the Shabacon Creek, which is about a half mile north of the facility. The facility is designed with sloped concrete floors in the tipping area and the trailer loading area to ensure proper containment and channeling of wastewater. All wastewater from the facility is conveyed to the existing sanitary sewer. Materials tracking, dust control, and stormwater management system, maintenance, best practices to mitigate the discharge of contaminants from the stormwater runoff. The facility will not impair surface waters within the surrounding community under the expected operating conditions. All current sewer outflows at the facility discharge directly to the Ewing Lawrence Sewage Authority, ELSA. While the facility is permitted to discharge wastewater directly to ELSA, any wastewater generated by onsite operations for stabilization and solidification of hazardous and non-hazardous waste are shipped off-site for treatment or disposal at properly permitted facilities. The proposed equipment and projects will have no impact on the installed operations or the impact of occurrence of combined sewer overflows. Again, the proposed projects will not have an impact on any potable water's usage and will not impair any public or private water systems. The facility is on public water for, it is the, wait, I lost my spot. Sorry. The proposed projects are not expected to cause any public drinking water or private well testing violations or exceedances. We're not expected to impair local sources of drinking water. Mercer continues to monitor groundwater contamination and will continue its practices to mitigate unintended discharges. No new waste streams, including any that would impact lead exposure, are expected to result from the project. The proposed project does not include an expansion of the facility beyond existing property boundary lines, would not impact any recreational open space. No trees will be removed to install or operate the proposed equipment. An additional impervious surfaces are not, will not be constructed. Everything at the facility will stay as is in order to accommodate the two projects. The projects won't cause any changes to urban land cover and therefore, therefore will not have an impact on the frequency or magnitude of flooding within the community. The seven stressor is the density and proximity stressors for emergency planning, permitted air sites, or NAGIPTI's systems. We are not classified as an emergency planning site and the project is not expected to change this classification. The proposed projects will not cause any changes to the number of emergency planning sites within the community and will not change the emergency response plans that the facility already has in place. As a currently permitted air site, the two proposed projects require minor source permit authorizations with small emissions increases. They will not increase any number of permitted air sites in operation within the surrounding community and the operations are in line with current equipment that is already located at the site. We, Mercer currently maintains their NAGIPTI's individual stormwater permit for the transfer station and the proposed projects will not require the facility to obtain additional permitting or modify the current permit. We continue to monitor the use of onsite equipment and storage containers to prevent unintentional discharges. Social detriments include unemployment and education. The proposed projects will not require Mercer to hire new personnel nor cause the loss of any new employment amongst current employees and the projects will not have an impact on the percentage of individuals with or without a high school education in the surrounding community. Summarizing the EJIS findings, because the facility is located in a concentration of, in an area of concentrated air pollution, the fuel burning units will be operated in a manner to mitigate the presence of emissions, limited to non-ozone season operation and each limited to less than 2,000 hours of operation per year. Any negligible increase of concentration of air pollutants are directly related to this, this limited operation. Facility has no impact to the number of waste collection vehicles accessing the facility. Mobile sources of air pollution will not be increased. The addition of the new shredder will simply allow for faster organization and delineation of waste at the facility. Facility is not located in a contaminated area and it has no planned operations warranting any further deed restrictions. No modifications are required to any existing waste or water permits or any changes to the facility's operations. The facility is currently permitted to discharge stormwater under an existing NAGIPTI's permit and no proposed increases in water usage rate or sanitary wastewater generation are expected to result from these two minor projects. No proposed changes to the environment within or around the facility that would adverse, that would adversely impact identified facets of public health will be impacted by the two proposed projects. Similarly, Mercer is an existing permitted facility and the minor projects will have no and the minor projects will have no impact on density of permitted facilities. No expansion of the facility's boundaries or property lines are proposed. And the facility will have no impact on the operation of any nearby educational institutions or impact any local employment rates. Public participation regarding the EJIS and the two proposed permit applications was completed in September prior to October 1st. A sign was posted outside of the facility to notify the local community and passerby of public participation. Notifications were published in English and Spanish in two local newspapers available in the city of Trenton and greater Mercer County. Invitations for today's hearing were sent to nearby community members, local businesses, and local regulatory officials via certified mail. Members of the surrounding community are able to provide comments through December 31st, and comments may be sent to the email address listed below and proposed in the public notice documents or by mail directly to the facility. So at this point, we have reached the conclusion of our presentation regarding the minor projects. If we have any questions or comments or concerns about the presentation, the proposed projects, or the submitted EJIS, we are able to take them here within the room, or if you are attending remotely and wish to participate, please use the hand raise function and we'll facilitate your questions. Start in the room. For any comments? Questions? Up here? And then Dan, do you have anybody with a hand raised? Please use the hand raise feature on Teams. Okay. So. Stand by. Okay, so there the hand raises, got it, people. Okay. Okay. Yep. And then, so Brooke. I believe I can unmute you. Can you try to speak, Brooke? Let us know if we can hear you.
I just changed the setting. Brooke, can you try now?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Brooke. Appreciate your patience. Thank you, Leah.
Thank you both. Am I good to give a public comment at this time?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Good evening. My name is Brooke Helmick, and I have the privilege to serve as the Director of Policy for the New Jersey Environmental Justice Alliance, also known as NJEJA. For over 20 years, we have supported community organizations and residents in realizing their right to clean air, land, and water. NJEJA has also been a key member of the coalition which worked to support and pass the environmental justice law and track and follow its implementation throughout this process. So this work is of deep importance to us. To that end, we are here today to offer our guidance and our expertise to the team at Mercer and the DEP to implement best practices which can guarantee emissions reductions in the overburdened community surrounding the facility and the greater Trenton area. Therefore, I want to highlight first our overarching point. We believe that the EJ law and the subsequent EJ rules promulgated under the law require that Mercer and any facility which is seeking a permit under the law is required to decrease their emissions, not just in instances where they would be adding equipment, as was described tonight, but from their existing baseline levels. This is such that the cumulative impact of toxic air pollution levels are decreased from their existing levels to bring relief to local and surrounding communities. As it is, as was mentioned in the presentation, the surrounding community is adverse for 21 of 26 stressors that the rule measures, which includes PM pollution and air toxics. Mercer has stressed repeatedly in this call that this facility is not solely responsible for the stressors and pollution levels that are occurring in this area, and we do agree with that. But the presence and operation of the facility in the area does contribute to the pollution levels and therefore is part of the negative health outcomes and statistics for the surrounding community. Therefore, like many of my colleagues on this call, we believe that we do not need to accept the status quo emissions as something we cannot change or is an insurmountable challenge. And quite the contrary, there are feasible, technically viable, market-ready solutions that Mercer can implement and DEP can require as part of the EJ conditions on this permit. To that end, we recommend that electrification be implemented into the new permit and future operating decisions. Electrification of equipment is the fastest way to guarantee emissions reductions for the local community. And particularly, I want to highlight the front-end loaders, excavators, and forklifts of the facility, all of which run on fossil fuels. Instead, transition these pieces of equipment to electric-powered, which would reduce emissions. There are models for all of these types of equipment which are readily available and feasible for implementation. All of these thoughts, as well as others that we will share in our long-form written comment, will be sent to the Mercer team by the written comment deadline so that we might provide guidance and our analysis of feasibility, which could not be robustly addressed in the three-minute allotment. We welcome further comments and ongoing discussion on this topic. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brooke. Appreciate your comment. All right. Amy, are you able to unmute and speak?
Yes, I am, if you can hear my voice.
Yep, we can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity and for your presentation. My name is Amy Goldsmith. I'm the New Jersey State Director for Clean Water Action, and we, along with New Jersey Environmental Justice Alliance and Ironbound Community Corporation, we're the three lead organizations that got the EJ law passed in the first place and are working together and collaboratively to ensure the full implementation of the law and full protection of people who have been most vulnerable and most egregiously harmed by the cumulative impact of pollution. And we are, like Brooke, agree that the law was designed to reduce emissions over time, that not one speck more of pollution can be allowed, or sort of a transferring of pollution from one source to another. Using used oil can be concerning. The used oil industry, while, you know, they say they're regulated, has many concerns and potential loopholes in the quality of those fuels. We also agree that the facility has to look at the whole facility and what it can do to reduce harm and exposure. And we agree that electrification of equipment, vehicles, all of those, all of the new items that you're thinking about installing in the future should be electrified, providing zero emissions so that you're avoiding all the air pollution or reducing the air pollution. Just speaking to having operations of your burners to provide comfort for your workers, which I think you should provide comfort for your workers in the cold, still means that you are operating 2,000 hours a year and producing pollutants in the process. And the term negligible impact on air pollution flies in the face of the law, which is there should not be one speck more of pollution. In fact, there should be a ratcheting down over time. That was the intention. I do appreciate your comments about there not being new traffic and more trucks, but those trucks and traffic could be electric vehicles as well. And installing of charging stations and operations over time, phasing out equipment as you phase in better equipment. So Clean Water Action is concerned about the facility in a very highly overburdened community, and we are concerned that modifications under the definition of expansion still means that there should be reductions. Every effort should be made to do reductions, and it is the DEP's responsibility to actually ensure that when permits are renewed, that those improvements are made at the time of expansion, or in this case, a modification. I thank you for this time, opportunity to make comments, and I reserve the opportunity to submit written comments standalone or with others in the future. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for your comment. Appreciate that. I have G A L C O C R.
Yes, that is me. Are you able to hear me?
Okay. Yep, let me just turn up the volume here just a little bit. Go ahead.
Thank you so much, and my full name is Gustavo Alcoser, and I'm speaking to you all from Ironbound Community Corporation based in Newark in Ironbound, New Jersey. And I appreciate hearing my colleagues' remarks, and want to also again mention how Ironbound Community Corporation was involved in the passing of the EJ law, and what is happening today here is going to represent what is possible for other parts of our neighborhoods and communities, which is the reason why I am speaking today. I want to again say how the EJ law and EJ rule require Mercer to seek to reduce its current emissions from their baseline levels, as one of my colleagues was mentioning. And I want to focus my remarks today on trying to find a solution to electrify the fleet and electrifying facility equipment. I hear how you are proposing some alternatives, and I have some concerns when hearing this. I want to mention how, when you are saying your alternatives about used oil burners, how these heaters are going to be burning used oil and transmission fluid to provide the heat that is necessary, but it will be all released as pollutants into our air. And I want to encourage for electric heaters to be considered as a possibility. And as I am also seeing from this presentation, I would really want electric heaters to be considered, and want to emphasize the fact that electrifying these processes would also require for an additional component to ensure that the electrification is providing clean energy for it to be added solar panel system to be able to provide the clean energy into the electrification process. That's what I wanted to highlight here when we are talking about electrification, for us to make sure that the electricity that is being generated also is proven to be clean. And those are my comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gustav. Appreciate that. Will you be submitting comments in writing?
Yes, I will.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
And then Cindy, I do see you have your hand raised.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Thank you so much. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you so much for holding this hearing, and thank you for allowing the opportunity to comment. My name is Cindy. I work with a lot of different communities in the Ironbound, and my comment today will echo many of the concerns already raised. So as the presentation has pointed out, Mercer is asking to add two used oil burners to heat its garages, as well as new construction and demolition debris shredder to its permit. However, this proposed equipment will increase emissions and cumulative burdens on the surrounding community. As we've seen from the maps, the facility is surrounded on all sides by communities that are considered overburdened communities under the environmental justice law. People's homes are across the street from the facility, and within one mile radius of the facility, there are 13 schools and childcare facilities, three hospitals, three nursing homes, and eight playgrounds that are all exposed to the pollution. In both the spirit and the letter of the EJ law and rules, facilities are required to examine their emissions and reduce their total emissions to mitigate the cumulative impact on communities. Instead of trying to decrease its emissions, Mercer acknowledges that the additional oil burners and shredder would add to this pollution, but repeatedly states that these emissions will not significantly contribute to the environmental burden or are just negligible increases. However, as has been previously pointed out, the EJ law doesn't care about whether emissions are not significant or if they're negligible, because even seemingly insignificant levels of pollution from multiple facilities can add up to significant pollution levels for a community. We believe that Mercer, under the EJ law and rules, must seek to reduce its current emissions from their baseline level as it operates in and around an OVC. In addition, the law requires Mercer to consider reasonable design alternatives, but the alternatives it considers in the EJIS are currently inadequate. The used oil burners, as is proposed, would release pollutants contained in those used oils into the air. Electric heaters are available for a variety of space sizes and could be an easy, non-polluting alternative for Mercer's heating needs, as pointed out by the previous comment, but Mercer has not considered this in the EJIS. Burning polluting oil so close to the community, especially when there are schools, hospitals, childcare facilities around, without even considering the non-polluting alternative, is not acceptable. Mercer also admits that using the shredder could increase its emissions, but states that it's necessary because it needs to increase the efficiency of waste processing. But the EJIS doesn't state that Mercer needs to increase its efficiency in order to meet any kind of increased supply or waste demand from customers. In fact, it explicitly states that's not seeking to expand the amount of waste that's accepted at the facility. Therefore, I want to echo the other public comments here that pointed out the EJIS must be developed in order to meet Mercer's obligation under the EJ law to protect the surrounding community, including by analyzing the increased emissions, no matter how small, as well as analyzing other design alternatives that have been pointed out, especially electrification options. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Will you be submitting comments in writing as well?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for your comment. I believe I might have some here in the chat. That's just Leah letting us know. Okay.
I don't see any other hands or chats.
Okay, great. If you do have any questions, if you're having difficulty unmuting yourself, you can provide a comment in the chat or via email. And as I said earlier, they will be compiled and addressed in our response to comment documents at the end of December and into January. All that information will be posted online on the NJDEP EJ website with our presentation materials and a recording and a transcript. Give folks just another few minutes in case comments pop up. Keep this. Well, thank you for flipping back to that slide. If you have any additional comments, you can provide them to the mercergroupejis email address on your screen and the email address you requested today's link from. Also, you can send them directly to the facility at 1519 Calhoun Street in Trenton. We'll compile all comments received. I'll just keep this live for a couple more minutes before we close off the presentation. Everyone feel free to go grab dinner if needed. If you have any additional questions, like I said, please reach out via email. If you are looking for the materials, like I said, we'll upload the transcript in the presentation as quickly as possible, and we'll compile our responses to your comments this afternoon. Thank you very much. and we'll compile our responses to your, your comments this afternoon. Thank you very much. So I'm gonna keep this open for another five, 10 minutes, and then we all close it out and finish the recording. Thank you. Thank you, everybody for joining. We're going to end this event here. If you have any questions, please utilize the email address for any additional comments.